August eleventh, please stand for the first of projects.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Over the silence, please. All right, thank you. All right, roll call, Ward one, Ms. Gambles here, Ward two, Mr. Richardson's here, Ward three, Mr. Fontaine is here, Ward four, Mr. Clark is here, City Clerk, Secretary, Ms. Blanchard, and Mayor. All right, I don't know before, work, open the workshop for discussion of fiscal year twenty-six budget. Since last meeting, anybody come up with any questions?
I have a copy.
Okay.
Um, one thing that I would like for the board to consider is doing a one thousand dollar stipend to CASA. It's not that CASA is, what that does is it shows partnership, so when they go to get grants, when they see that the governmental entities are supporting them, it gives them more credibility for getting grants to, and Mayor, I'm sure you can speak more to that since you ran a nonprofit, but it, it gives them credibility when, when getting grants. And a thousand dollars is a small stipend, I know that legislation is such that we can't give to most nonprofits, but CASA is the exception to the rule. It's the one nonprofit that the legislature has allowed governmental entities to, to help. So that's one thing. Um, the other thing is, I think that it is critical at this point for us to seriously consider updating and doing a new comprehensive plan. We're almost twenty years out from the last comprehensive plan, it's outdated, it's, you know, we're growing exponentially now, and it's only gonna get more quick from here, they're gonna more quickly build and grow from here. And I think that it's important for the city to have its comprehensive plan up to date and enforced. So I know that's not a small ticket item, but it's something that, especially after going to our last MML conference, I think it's something that we need to really seriously look into doing within the next twelve months or so. And then I only have one other thing, and it's an individual issue with one of the pay rates, so we'll talk about that later, I guess.
Okay. All right, any comments? Alderman?
Comprehensive plan, isn't that set on a thirty-year plan?
It, um, the last one was two thousand nine, and it was supposed to be good to twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty?
Yeah. Which, when you look at the comprehensive plan, they start talking about charrettes and all of that, it's, yeah, it's pretty much getting outdated, so, um, we'll have to, I guess, do an RFQ, and put it out for bid, and see, you know, what it would cost to get it done. I don't, I don't know, I wasn't around in two thousand nine, I wasn't attending any meetings, so I don't know what it costs back then. But, uh, you got Slaughter and Associates did it last time, Orion, there's a few companies out there that can, can bid on it, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments?
On the budget?
Anything?
Yeah, what else changed since draft five?
Uh, probably the biggest thing was, um, we got an update on insurance premium, health insurance premiums. Originally, he was thinking it was about eight percent, looking like twenty-seven and a half percent. Uh, we built that in, uh, I guess I should add, I think he had a similar number last year and it didn't materialize, I think the rate increase was seven percent. Now, there've been a couple payroll changes, but nothing others more significant.
So did you budget at twenty-seven percent?
Did, payroll.
We did that last year, and then Mr. Moody came back and we wound up being...
About seven percent.
Seven percent. And he told us going into budget season, it was gonna be eight percent increase, and then this week he calls, well, just, just put twenty-seven percent in, and, and, and that'll keep you covered.
He said he hoped it wasn't gonna be that.
We're supposed to meet with him Tuesday, next Tuesday, or tomorrow? Next, next Tuesday, huh? Hopefully we can get some better...
It wasn't scheduled yet.
Firm numbers, Ronda.
And he had to cancel one too, he was waiting for the reply the other day.
Okay. So those are the biggest, the big changes. Anything else?
Do you wanna discuss this?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Um, in looking at pay increases, everybody pretty well, for the most part, got a standard across the board ra- uh, raise, three percent raise.
Ms. Ronda, before you get too far into it...
Sure.
Did we get a new copy of that, or is...
No, this is, this is the one we had last time, do, is...
It's the same.
Is it the same?
It has, it has not been updated.
Right, you said there's a couple changes.
That roster's not been updated.
The roster, but what about the dollar amounts, is there any change on any of that from the last one?
There, there are, um...
The only changes should be in the police department.
Yes.
Okay.
So, just in the police department, there were changes?
That's the only changes I can remember.
Okay, 'cause what, my question has nothing to do with the PD. All right, the only, the only thing that I saw that I didn't agree with was in admin. So you've got one person that got a substantial raise, but that person took on new duties, took on, was promoted to a different position, and is working towards something else. So, I mean, that's, that's understandable, but you've got one that got more than twice the raise, the standard raise of everybody else with no additional work, no additional duties, and has been here less time than any of the rest of them. And I think that that person, unless they're taking on additional duties, needs to get the same three percent raise everybody else did.
And I know what you're talking about, I had to agree with that, I mean, I feel like, uh, even if they're under probation period also, possibly.
What was the last one about probation periods, huh?
Do we have a probation period before significant raises?
Three months.
Three months?
So, I, I know exactly who you're talking about, so he was hired at a training pay to work with, um...
Karen.
Yeah. With his supervisor at that time, I guess you'd classify as supervisor. So, once his, the person he was working with left, then his pay, he, he's doing the same work that that person did, and now can be making the same pay that that person was, was making.
That person left at making the amount of money that he's gonna make now?
Yes.
He's been here less than a year, and how many years was she here? Twenty?
No, no, seven, six, seven, something like that, six or seven years.
Oh, I'll tell you, she came in late eighteen, when I came in, she...
I, I mean, that's almost an eight percent raise, and personally, I, I don't think that's fair to anybody else. Those, if, when you come into a position, you come in, you negotiate what your salary's gonna be, and if you've got a probationary period and you pass that probationary period, then that, that is negotiated when you come in. At the end of that nego- that period, you get a certain raise. I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that happened.
Well, like I said, he was brought in at a training position.
Well, I, I realize that.
And now he's in the, the fire. You know, he, he, he is that department.
I understand.
So...
Is there anything?
And I'm, I'm not saying that he shouldn't get a raise, what I'm saying is, I think that the percentage of the raise is excessive for considering, all things considered.
Is there anything, when you, when you're hiring, when you, when you offer a position, is there anything that says, you started this, once your training is complete, you advance to this? Or is this just based off of, 'cause that's what she had left out?
We do have a lot of positions, you know, I mean, going to the police department, fire department, you know, people come in, it's at a training pay, and then get, once they become...
Certified.
Certified, qualified, whatever, then it changes.
But what I'm saying though is, when you hired this person on, was any of that, was any of that part of it, that once training is complete, this is what this is, or any of that?
Do you recall?
I don't recall.
Yeah, I don't recall either.
I mean, he hadn't been here that long.
Started in, um, November?
January. January she left, so he started around November, wasn't it November?
It's been less than a year.
November, yeah. All right, going to police department pay, um, you know, I tried to put in that legacy pay.
Before we, before we move on to that, Mayor, can we, uh, so, the position that, that we were just discussing is fill in the vacant position, correct?
Yes.
So that's the duties that, that he has taken over, the, the one that's empty.
Back in January.
And then there's another one that you had brought up, Ronda, that has an increase, and that's because of more duties, more job duties?
Yes. Yes. That was an incre- that's...
Is this new duties onto the city, or is this taking duties from others?
Uh, no, 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 that's new duties, uh, training to, to take over a much larger position in addition to what she had. So she was brought in as an administrative assistant, then went to, to deputy city clerk, and then within the next year or so, will move on up to yet another position. So it's, it's intense training and additional duties. It's the way I understand it, am I correct?
Correct.
She's doing a lot of complex tasks, she's assisting Robert with accounting, I'm talking about real accounting, and she's assisting me with multiple duties. She's invaluable to, to us.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I'm just saying that whenever everybody says, you know, taking on new duties, is it new duties for the city, or is she taking on duties from Robert, or taking duties from you and doing those duties, or, you know, that's what I'm trying to figure out?
She's going far beyond what our expectations would be.
Well, and she was hired as an administrative assistant, and is, was promoted to deputy city clerk. So that in and of itself is, has, 'cause we hadn't had a deputy city clerk in a while, huh? It's been a while.
We have Kylie.
Kylie's payroll and stuff.
Deputy city clerk also.
No, we haven't had one, she's been...
You haven't? Not for three years, since we've been here.
What's that? Deputy city clerk?
Right. I mean, a full-fledged, nothing but deputy city clerk.
You're right, because that position was created so that we could have, he and I could get some help. He was drowning.
You can go ahead, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
You can go ahead. You can go ahead. I'm done.
You're done, okay. I gotta wear my hair in it tonight. Um, so, police department, we decided, Mike and I, we not gonna do, um, in police and fire, we're not doing the longevity pay. I mean, the whole thing, the whole, um, motive was to be competitive with Bay St. Louis and the county. And, um, what we've done, uh, sitting down with the police chief, is we've eliminated two patrol positions. We had nine patrol positions that were not filled, and so now we have seven patrol positions that are not filled. And so, we have taken the money that we saved from those two positions and divided it out amongst the police staff that we have. And so that's the change that is on, it actually went down, the salaries, um, from the last budget. Once, once we gave them a longevity pay and a increase, it was just, it was, it was too much, too much money.
Can I get a copy of what we had last time? Um, I thought I grabbed it, showing the breakdown...
Anybody have it?
Of the longevity?
Do we have a way to make a copy?
Who, who was the one with the longevity? This one right here?
Just the longevity pay, or the whole salary thing?
Well, it was the one that listed the positions, and it showed longevity versus... No, but I just want the one from last meeting, if possible. Last meeting, we had one that listed all the positions, and what the current hourly rate is, and what the new rate was gonna be with the longevity.
Yes.
'Cause I have a hard time when he'll see them, what's, uh, what is, uh... Right, well, that's what I was looking at on here. I guess what I'm getting at is, on here, last meeting, we had it all listed with the longevity built in, but what we have tonight is just a lump sum, hourly's, you know, salaries and wages.
Julie ran upstairs to...
Yeah, I gave her my copy, she's printed, she's gonna copy it.
So Mayor, off the top of your head, what's that move, the starting hourly rate to?
Twenty-three twenty. I'm sorry, twenty-two fifty-eight, right?
That sounds right.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-two fifty-eight, Shane. So we'll have two patrolmen who have just started, they'll be making twenty-two fifty-eight.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You know, Mayor, we can't donate to nonprofits, right?
Yes, sir.
It's, no, but generally speaking, um, there are only a few nonprofits that are allowed for us to donate to. You can't just, a city entity can't don- and, and that was one of the things that was discussed at the, our recent MML. There are only some that are approved by legislature that we can donate to, one of which was CASA. But my question is, see that bottom one right there on the left? That is, should be paid by the nonprofit, because that would be considered... Do you see where I'm, what I'm getting at?
Right now, she is a city employee.
But she, it, I mean...
It doesn't receive benefits.
No, no benefits.
She's not in verse, she doesn't receive, uh, hospitalization or health insurance. But you would like to see her salary moved?
Yeah, for, to who she's working for, 'cause she's not really working for the city. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, with, the city absorbs all the rest of the cost, I think that one thing should be absorbed by the nonprofit.
Mayor, you say by not doing the, um, longevity plan and reducing to employees, it decreased?
Yes, overall, decreased. Some people leaving the longevity pay, and we're getting four fifty an hour increase.
Looks like on average, about eighty-eight cents a...
Yeah, so what we did was, we, we took two salaries away and bumped everybody, the remaining, by two dollars an hour.
With salaries and wages, for full-time, at the last meeting, was one million, one hundred and nineteen, five thirty-one. This time, they're one million, one hundred and thirty-six, one thirty-one, so it actually increased. Just on salaries, not, not including any benefits or anything.
I don't have mine from last time.
Zero zero one, two hundred, four twenty?
It was saying it went down to, um, five one seven, I'm just trying to remember.
Do you have the one from last time?
I don't, not here.
I'm just wondering if maybe them two positions got left in there or something, or what?
No, there were definitely two positions removed.
What was the budget number you said last time, Shane?
It was, uh, one million, one hundred and nineteen, five thirty-one. That's salaries and wages, non-exempt. And on here, it's one million, one thirty-six, so about seventeen thousand increase. One million, one thirty-six, one thirty-one. You can just check it out and see later, Mayor.
Okay.
I don't, like I said, maybe somebody got left in or something by accident.
I got one up sixteen, six hundred.
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand, six hundred.
All right, I'll check it out.
What did we do in fire, Mayor?
Say it again?
What did we do in fire?
Uh, three percent. All right, anything else?
On the P D, the, um, the changes that not doing the longevity, that all that went just to the patrol or?
No.
That in, in...
No.
Percentage-wise, I mean, because there's a few that's different than patrol that got more percent.
No, it went to, um, everybody, right?
Everybody.
Everybody but Mike.
That's, that's the last meeting.
Yeah, he's coming back here. I should add it, last meeting.
Yeah, I have, I have that day on.
Yeah, this one.
We didn't get.
Yeah, one here.
Okay. And that's, this is what I'm claiming, it's just from last meeting.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't get one of these, we didn't get a new one of these, correct?
No, it's in working progress.
Okay.
So if you take the fiscal year twenty twenty-five column, everybody got three percent plus two dollars.
Yeah, that's what, that was throwing me off there. I forgot about the three percent and the two dollars.
Say it again.
See, that was throwing, that was throwing me off. I got about the three percent and the two dollars.
Yeah, three percent plus two dollars, yeah.
Chief, we are be real close to competing with other cities now. How far are we apart now?
Probably a dollar or something like that.
So our, our patrol officer with experience is gonna be making twenty-three twenty. We don't, we don't, still don't know where Bay St. Louis is gonna wind up.
I thought, Mayor, I thought there was gonna be a twenty, twenty-two fifty-eight.
Starting out.
Starting out.
No, we got, we got two, no, we got two people who just started out and then we got other people who have been through.
Right, but if...
On the road.
But if we lose any, uh, patrol officer, whenever we hire them, what's the dollar amount that we hired them at? At the starting, which is twenty-two fifty-eight or at the twenty-three something?
Twenty-two fifty-eight.
And so the bay and county will be about a dollar forty-two more than us on starting. Somewhere as near there. I think they're moving to twenty-four.
The, the county's looking at twenty-four. We don't know where Bay St. Louis is gonna wind up.
Okay.
Bay St. Louis mayor is asking for six percent and the council's telling them three percent. So I don't know where they're gonna, they have a budget meeting tonight also. I don't know where they're gonna wind up. They might get people leaving Bay St. Louis to come to us.
Hope so.
I do too.
Mayor, I think the, the last two that we saw, I didn't, I didn't give them a raise. I think we just gave them three percent. We didn't give them...
That's, no, we didn't give them the extra. We just gave them three percent. Yeah. Anything else?
Three percent including to the part-time?
Part-time has just got three percent.
That's from, yeah, both police and fire.
Yep.
So I got a question.
Mm-hmm.
Chief, you said something a minute ago. Everybody got three percent? Except for you?
No, everyone, he got three percent.
I got, I got the three percent. I didn't get, I didn't take the two dollars. It's like, everybody...
Got it. I misunderstood that. Mr. Robert, at the next meeting, the next budget meeting, can you provide us this?
Yeah, I can.
With a column showing the percentage for each one?
We can.
Um...
It's actually an expanded list. Uh, that list does include all the employees. There's some, there's some part-timers.
It does.
Yeah, it's probably, I don't know, fifteen additional employees. But I've got half of it done right now. It's just a matter of getting twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah, I'd like to see it all and just show a percentage by each one on what, what each one of them is.
Understand?
The chan, the change in dollar amounts plus the percentage.
Yep. I tell you, that's change in rate.
Yeah. Whatever the, the pay scale changes to.
That's good.
Yeah, if you'll show the, what it was versus what it's gonna be, hourly rate or whatever, and what that percentage is.
That's good.
Lot quicker on a spreadsheet than sitting here on a calculator on the phone. What you got next, force, Mayor?
Say it again?
What you got next, force?
That's up to, it's up to y'all. Any questions on the other categories on the budget?
So the hundred and fifty thousand increase in the general fund is, uh, that's mostly insurance.
For the most part, yes. Well, also, there's a question last time about computer services, giving for admin. And we increased, I think, twenty thousand dollars and it's covered. And that's the new computer system.
What about utilities? What are we looking at in there? Any changes in utilities?
I don't think there's any changes whatsoever.
The biggest things that changed were salaries and insurance. That was a big...
Insurance is actually the largest front, front part.
So you wanna, y'all wanna have another workshop before the public hearing on Wednesday of next week to look over the salary sheet that you requested, Shane?
Yeah, I mean, and I know it's a moving target, but we haven't really, we're on draft seven. I'd like to get one final that we all can sit down and just go through and say, you know, that's just my thoughts. I mean, because I know it's gonna change. It may even change between now and then. You still working on some things, Robert?
Uh, the biggest thing I'm working on, um, is that roster. Actually, went through the payroll system and got actual numbers as opposed to what we've shown in history.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't mind having one just so we don't walk into the, to the public meeting on the hearing or whatever and have something different than what we're looking at now.
What do you think's gonna change between draft seven and the next one?
I hope nothing.
Okay, yeah.
He told us that last week.
Yeah, we, we made changes to the police payroll and then the insurance, but...
They say they're good today they're adopted anyway. After that, everything changes, huh?
Yeah, it's strictly an estimate.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I've heard that saying before.
All right, y'all wanna get together next Monday at six? We gotta have the workshop on the twentieth. The public hearing.
Next Monday, the eighteenth, you mean?
Eighteenth.
Yes.
You said the sixth. You had me all...
At six, yeah.
At six.
At six.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Jeremy?
Yep.
Okay. August eighteenth at six P M. We'll have the, uh, salary sheet updated.
And all numbers final for the public hearing?
All, all numbers final.
And all numbers will be final for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, as soon as you all decide this is a go, then Robert will make all those final.
The public hearing's on Wednesday, next Wednesday?
Yeah, correct.
Yes.
Actually, it's gonna be at six o'clock. And I was reminding the mayor, as Ronnie said last year, the public hearing is an opportunity for the public to be heard. You know, it's not a time for the board to re-explain everything. It's for them to, you know, comments, questions.
Right, that's why it's gotta be final before then, so we don't end up...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be final. All right, anything else? All right. We get a motion to adjourn.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
Ward one moves for two seconds. Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.